Hello there, welcome to this edition of People Politics in Power. I am Imani Amadiri. Since the 1999 constitution came into force in Nigeria, it has been regarded as an imperfect document, essentially because it is a military imposition, not made by we, the people of Nigeria, for ourselves. Some have gone as far as describing the document as a fraud, one that lies against the people it is made to govern. As a result, there have been relentless agitations for its amendment or its total makeover and overhaul. There have already been two efforts by the National Assembly to amend the constitution, yet the agitations have continued to fester. This week, the Constitution Review Committee, which was set up by the Nigerian Senate, commenced public hearings in the six geopolitical zones of the country to aggregate and synthesize the views of Nigerians who have been calling for its remaking into a better and more equitable ground norm for the country and its peoples. However, this latest effort appears to be limited in scope, going by the subjects and areas outlined by the Senate Committee that is organizing the public hearings. They are in four broad areas: gender equity and increased participation of women and vulnerable groups in governance. The second is the federal structure in governance and power devolution. The third deals with local government administration and local government autonomy. And finally, public revenue, fiscal federalism and revenue allocation. These are the four broad areas that the review is seeking to look at. Now, the question is, does this scope cover enough ground in a constitution review? Will amendments to these parts of the constitution satisfy the yearnings and aspirations of many Nigerians who want a more equitable, more robust document, if not a completely new one? Why not a more holistic review of the constitution, especially at a time when there are growing agitations for a breakup of the country? Will this process be enough to help reverse the current slide into more divisions along ethno-cultural lines? Can and will the center still hold for Nigeria? What about those who say it is no use amending a bad product? And who insist on the making of a brand-new constitution for Nigeria? The zona public hearings are slated to hold for only two days in each of the two centers per zone. Is that time long enough to thoroughly trash all the contending issues in the current constitution? And what happens after the public hearings? These are some of the questions that will be seeking answers to. So join us right after now as we take a look at these issues on the review of the constitution, particularly the public hearings that we kick off later this week. Stay with us. Okay, let's get to meet our guests. We have here in the studio joining us, Mr. Taye Odeawale, who is a national coordinator, Coalition of Federalists for Good Governance. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you, happy to be here.
We also expect to join us virtually from Oxford in the UK, Mr. Samsin Itoddo, who is the executive director of YAGA Africa. He will be joining us very soon. But let's begin from here in the studio, Mr. Odeawale. The public hearings are expected to take off this week. And you have seen and heard the areas of the constitution that these public hearings will be focused on. There are many who think that it is not, or those areas are not broad enough and that perhaps we should do a more holistic review of the constitution. First, what do you think is wrong with the 1999 constitution as amended?
Thank you very much to start with that. The 1999 constitution as amended, or the 1999 constitution antiquated to Nigeria at the beginning of the fourth republic on the 29th of May 1999, was more or less a unitary form of a constitution as against a federation that Nigeria is supposed to be. And then before now, Nigerians have expected the National Assembly. We have the sixth session now, from those who started 1999 to 2003, which was the fourth National Assembly, to the fifth, to the sixth, to the seventh, to the eighth and the present ninth, to have done a substantial review of the constitution in making the entity called Nigeria a federation in content and the practice, in content and character, not as given to us by the military. When you are doing the preamble, you did say that the four areas are not holistic enough. But I think the number two and number four, if the National Assembly, which number two has to do with federal structure in government and devolution of power, and number four, which has to do with public revenue and fiscal federalism, if those two areas, if required reviews are carried out in the constitution, those two areas, it will help a lot in taking Nigeria back to where it started in 1954 to 1966, when the unification system started with that unification decree in 1966 made by the first military regime and consolidated, further consolidated by successive military regime up to where we are today. So I think we have to start somewhere. Since we cannot address all the problem at the same time, my prayer is that the SSAT this term around will not end up as a cosmetic one like the one done by the previous assemblies.
Your organization, Coalition of Federalists for Good Governance in Nigeria, actually submitted a memorandum
Yes.
to the Senate Committee.
Yes.
What were those areas that your coalition actually wanted the review committee to focus on?
Thank you. Based on the thematic areas given by the committee, it's CFGG Coalition of Federalists for Good Governance. When we submitted our memorandum on the 8th of September last year, 2020, we focused on four areas, four areas that in the exclusive list, item 11, item 39, and item 45 should be removed from the exclusive list to the concurrent list. If you know, the problem with Nigeria federation is that the center is overburdened and is getting suffocated. It has, there are 68 items in the exclusive list, while there are only 30 items in the concurrent list. To be precise, item 11 that we are talking about, this with construction, alteration, and maintenance of roads, as may be declared as federal tronkey road by the National Assembly. The National Assembly from 1990 now has never declared any road as federal tronkey road. The National Assembly inherited the federal tronkey road. All the road, totally at 35,000 kilometers, all those roads that are called a federal tronkey road. Those roads were not federal tronkey roads in the first republic. It was after the quarter of 1966, gradually of 1999, that the federal government took over most of those roads, ideally in a federation as it was in the first republic. Any road leading from federating units in Nigeria at the 36s, any road leading from one federating unit to the other, the road supposed to be managed by those two states territorially, while they have a border at the center, which is the federal government, that they come up with the required design and the bridges. But the federal government took over all those roads and from the look of things, it has got itself suffocated without being able to manage the roads. I came back from Maloney yesterday by road. The Abuja Local Ya Road that had been under construction since the time of President Obasoya up to now has not been completed because as I said, one part, move it to another part, they won't done. When that one receive rainfall of two, three, four years, it will get damage again and then they move there. So if it had to be that from here to Abaji, F City is in control, from Abaji to Local Ya, Kogi State is in control, is provision of the federal government, I think it would be better.
What you are saying in effect is that if this exclusive legislative list that you're talking about now, thinning it down, cutting it down from the number of items that are there now to a more manageable one.
To a more manageable for the federal government.
That will fall under item two for these public hearings.
Yes.
That's the federal structure.
Yes, yes, that's under item two that I said.
Okay.
Federal structure, devolution of powers.
Yes.
You devolve power. Power to, for, also item 39, it has to do with mines and minerals. You know, as you have it in the 1999 constitution, the various states are in custody of mineral resources, but they cannot exploit it without approval.
Because it's on the exclusive legislative.
Because it's on the exclusive legislative. And that is giving room for illegal miners here and there. And by extension, wasting resources and not allowing those that are supposed to be practically engaged at the state level, not allowing them to get the required job. All of them running to Abuja, where there are no jobs for them.
All right, let's join up with Mr. Samsin Itoddo, who is the executive director of YAGA Africa. He's joining us virtually from Oxford in the UK. Thank you so much, Mr. Itoddo, for joining us.
Thank you very much. It's good to see you, Imani.
Right, well, unfortunately, the public hearings are going to kick off this week and you are away in the UK. But I'm sure that YAGA is very much represented here at home to deal with the issues because I'm aware that YAGA actually submitted a memorandum to that committee.
Yeah, I didn't get your question, but if I did get you, you were talking, you were asking about the issues?
Yes, I'm asking about the issues that YAGA put forward in his memorandum to the Senate Committee on the Constitution Review.
Sorry, I didn't get your question.
Well, we seem to be having some audio problems there.
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay, fine. I was asking the issues that are contained in YAGA's memorandum to the Senate Committee on the Constitution Review.
Well, I can't hear you clearly, but let me just speak on to the issues that, you know, we consider priority issues for YAGA Africa. Some of them align with the issues that the gentleman in the studio referred to around devolution of powers. As you see, the current state of the polity is just an affirmation that Nigeria needs to unbundle and address the inequities, the structural inequities within our governance system. This system where the federal government has enormous powers to legislate on a range of issues is not sustainable. And if we consider ourselves a federal state, then there is need to review, you know, the power sharing formula within the constitution. And this is an opportunity, you know, to do so. So we strongly support devolution of powers. There's need to reduce some items on the exclusive legislative list and grant, you know, states the power to legislate on some of those issues. The second point is around the local government's structure and the need, you know, to have clarity and constitutional provisions that recognizes local government as a third tier of government with its own relative autonomy. And that can address, you know, some of the challenges that we have with local governance and decentralization in the country. We are grappling with, you know, the challenges of group autonomy and states and local governments are unable to address or take decisions on issues relating to security, issues relating to health, issues relating to education without any form of interference by another hyperstructure above those structures. The third point, and very critical to this process, is the process of amending the constitution itself. Over the years, there have been advocacy and demands that we need to revisit review section nine of the constitution that deals with the procedure for amending the constitution. The current, you know, procedure for amending the constitution makes, you know, citizens' participation or public participation in the process so open, so fluid, that it's only determined by legislators in National Assembly. We need to integrate things like referendum, you know, in our constitutional amendment process. If the preamble of the constitution says we, the people, do, you know, agree to live together, then that constitution in the true sense of the word should integrate public participation in the amendment process of the constitution. But what we currently have is that the constitution is being amended by legislators. And oftentimes, some of the issues that are prioritized by the legislators are not in consonance with the priority issues that the people want. And I give you a classic example. If you look at the four amendments to the constitution, from the first alteration in 2010 down to the last alteration in 2018, thereabout, one of the topical issues that Nigerians have advocated for was local government autonomy, decentralization, fiscal federalism, indigenship and citizenship. But if you analyze all the amendments that have sailed through over a period of time, there are only election-related amendments that have sailed through or the one around the industrial courts or as well as the amendments on, you know, deducting of necessity. Now, that is problematic. It's just a reflection of the fact or an indication of the fact that sometimes the legislators don't prioritize the issues that are critical to the Nigerian state or the Nigerian people. And this amendment process, this ongoing amendment process and the public hearings, I hope it's not just an activity that would end up with a series of amendments that are not critical, you know, to the Nigerian state and reforming the, addressing the inequities within our system. If we're going to have a constitutional amendment that indeed responds to the priorities of the people, then it must start with first, amending the procedure, the process of amending the constitution. It needs to be reviewed. It needs to include people and we need a referendum. And perhaps, you know, this clamor for a new brand of constitution, you know, will come to fruition if section nine of the constitution that deals with the mode of amendment, you know, is revised. But I strongly believe that the current constitutional order that we have, you know, is defective and it needs some reform. We need a new constitution. But we cannot adopt extra constitutional means to amend the constitution. It has to be within the existing constitutional order. But it must start by amending section nine of the constitution on the modern procedure for amending the constitution.
You have raised a number of issues, Samsin, here. And the first that I'm going to take up with you is the public hearing itself that is going to hold this week. Now, from the timetable that has been put out by the committee, two days only, two centers in each of the six geopolitical zones. Do you think that those two days are enough to active for people who want to appear at those public hearings to articulate their positions on all these issues that have been put down here by the committee? The four items that, four or so items that are, as it were, look very well loaded?
Well, the truth is, the time is very short. And that is why, you know, the members of the public are invited to submit their memorandum. And several groups have submitted their memorandum. But the fundamental question is, what is the procedure adopted by National Assembly? Particularly, you know, the Senate and the House of Reps in amending the constitution? What we have seen is, you know, both chambers have adopted different strategies of amending the constitution. Now, we would have expected both chambers to work in unison. And if we're going into a public hearing, we should have, you know, both chambers, both chambers of National Assembly organizing public hearings and creating adequate time for people to make their submissions. But the truth is, you're going to go into a public hearing. We've done this over and over again as a country. The time is going to be limited for people to make their submissions. Everyone cannot speak. But the key question is, will the legislators prioritize issues in the memorandum that people submit? Or the issues that will make it to the final report are issues that the legislators, in their wisdom, consider as priority issues? And there's always a conflict. There's always a conflict with the priorities that legislators have set for themselves and the priorities of the people. Yes, the people may have articulated issues, but as you can see, look at local government autonomy. The National Assembly voted yes for local government autonomy in the last amendment process. When it went to the State House of Assemblies, the State House of Assemblies jettisoned it. And if these people are true representatives of the people, you'd expect that they would have voted yes in support of local government autonomy. But they didn't do that. Is the time sufficient? It is not sufficient. That is why we need to look at direct democracy initiatives and things like referendum. And that should be integrated in our constitution review process so we can encourage public participation. And I hope that our political class will get to a point where they will engage, you know, the process of giving Nigerians a true and a citizens-led constitution that addresses a lot of inequities. We've got a bad constitution and we must accept it as a people that our current constitution is not fit for purpose. It cannot address, you know, the priority needs of the people. And it's a constitution forced on us by the military. And let no one, you know, try to romanticize the conversation and try to deceive Nigerians. I say, there were a set of people, the people who drafted the justice, Nikki Toby's committee, are civilians or they are democrats. No, but we know for sure that there is independence de facto and there's independence de jure. And in practice, the committee who drafted the 1979 constitution or the 1999 constitution, did they act with all the independence that they needed to give Nigerians a befitting constitution? And my assessment is no. So we need a new constitution and the people need to be part of this process so that that preamble that says we, the people, indeed will be we, the people, giving ourselves a new, a brand-new constitution. But again, Imani, I must stress that extra constitutional means of attaining a constitutional order is not the best way to do this. The best way to do this is to amend, you know, section nine of the constitution on the mode of altering the constitution so that we can integrate public participation. You know for sure, Imani, if the National Assembly elects not to conduct public hearings today, it can still go ahead and amend the constitution because there is no provision in the constitution that compares the National Assembly for doing what, for consulting with the people. And I consider that, you know, a huge gap within our constitutional jurisprudence.
All right, Samsin, let's turn to Mr. Odeawale here and to hear your take on these issues. First, the time allotted for this public hearing. And then the second issue has to do with the fact that, of what Samsin talks about, not adopting extra constitutional means to amend this constitution. And I refer to that because there are those who have been arguing that in fact, what we need in Nigeria today is a brand-new constitution, a complete new constitution and not the piecemeal approach of amending the constitution as it is now. And what could possibly happen is that the National Assembly, members of the National Assembly should be patriotic enough and enact a law which makes it possible for a constitutional conference or a nationalities conference to take place and for them to produce a new constitution.
Thank you very much. I doubt whether the National Assembly will accede to what you have said by enacting a law to bring in the people. Because we say they are representative of the people. There are 316 in the House of Representatives, 109 in Nigeria. Anytime anyone would then stand up to speak, we say he's voted for by his own people and that Nigerians are represented there. Yes, as Mr. Samsin said, the process has continued the 1999 constitution. More or less is exclusive of the people participation, but nonetheless, since the National Assembly had the committee set up, the add-on committee set up by both chambers, I requested for memorandum from interested parties. And such memorandum have been submitted in the Senate, I think, close to about 200 or more than 200 submit. I don't know the number in the House of Reps. And they are going forward to conduct a public hearing. The two days allotted are just too small for people, each of the two, okay, two centers in each of the two geopolitical zones, that is speaking of at least three states, going to one center. I wonder how interested parties from three states will be able to exhaust their views within the two days. But nonetheless, if Nigerians focus on item two and four, federal structure in governance and devolution of power, and then the number four, which is a public revenue and fiscal federalism. Number three is also very important, as I said, local government autonomy. If those areas are focused upon, I think it will help a lot. When you, the first question you asked me, item 45, which we also requested for, to be removed from exclusive list, this with policing, item 45. As we have it in Nigeria today, the police structure we run is a centralized one, just like other security agencies. But the most important security outfit in any country, be it a federation or a unitary state, is the police. The police in the federation are supposed not to be centralized.[1642.55] The police in the federation suppose not to be centralized. In fact, of all the twenty five federations in the world, it's only Nigeria that is running a centralized police structure. And that is the reason why the police is finding it very, very difficult to police the country called Nigeria. So we have recommended that policing should be taken from exclusive list to concurrent list. So that states that are economically viable, they set up their own state police command structure, which should complement the effort of the federal police that we have on ground. Where the exercise, as bad as it may be, my own appeal is that interested Nigerians should key into the opportunity and make their submissions and follow it up. If powers are devolved to some extent in this exercise, it will help the country to be looking further than as it is now. So when another assembly will come, we'll go a step further. By the time we do serious constitutional amendment for about two or three times, I think Nigeria will be able to go back to where it's coming from.
Are you really sure that Nigerians, even those who have submitted memoranda, would be enthusiastic about going for these public hearings, given the situation on ground today in Nigeria?
I think the situation on ground in Nigeria made the Senate add a committee in particular. Because I had a discussion with the clerk of that committee, Dr. Nusant Miribi, last week. It's the reason why they didn't restrict it to a zone alone. They came up with two centers is to reduce the number of state participation. It will be three states to one center and three states to another center in those geopolitical zones that have six states. So that, and the zone they choose for those three states is very close to them. I know you are talking of the problem of insecurity.
Exactly.
We have at hand. So that is the reason why they came up with two centers in each of these six geopolitical zones. We appeal to Nigerians to summon the courage and attend the public hearing and talk to the issues they have raised, they have presented. Because if we leave it to the National Assembly members, they have no, have no other option than to decide on whatever they want to decide upon and they send it to.
You know, like elections in Nigeria, when Nigerians feel that their votes do not count, they become very apathetic to elections. There have been two other efforts at amending this constitution. And on each of those occasions, like Samson noted, there have been only two major amendments in the constitution with four items or thereabout that have been amended in the constitution. And that's over a period of twenty one years of democracy.
Twenty two years.
Twenty two years of democracy. And then you are coming up with another amendment process now. When Nigerians always read meanings to this and say, this is political. It's always coming when it's a few months or one or two years to the next general election. And then you set up review committees in the Senate, in the House of Representatives. In the past, it used to be a joint committee carrying out these public hearings and conducting this business. But now it appears that the two houses are working on their own.
Yes, it may look like that, but we have to remember that they used to work together before. But what happened during the sixth assembly in Mina? That was the only David Mark and Banko leadership of the sixth assembly. When Senator Eke Kremadu headed the Senate Committee, Addo Committee on the Constitutional Review and Honorable now Senator, later Senator, not now. Honorable Bayu Nafada, who was the deputy speaker there, he headed the committee of the House. The issue of a chairman and co-chairman scattered that arrangement in Mina, if you remember. It was from that time that the two chambers decided to go their different ways. If you want to do an important exercise like this, since at the end of the day, whatever A concluded upon, B must conquer to hit. And whatever B decided upon, A must conquer.
So isn't that a waste of public resources and a waste of time? Because the various groups that have submitted memorandum to the Senate may have also submitted to the House of Representatives. And then they would then be required to make presentations to the two different committees at two different times.
Yes, it is. But if you look at our constitution again, the question we are talking about give for bicameral legislature, and there is reason for that.
There's nothing that says in the bicameral legislature that they cannot work together, cannot work in unison.
Nothing that says that.
And arrive at the same destination much quicker than they are doing right now.
You are right. Nothing, 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 nothing says that they cannot work together. But you may not believe it. For example, in the House of Representatives, an item like policing, I'm just, not that they have concluded what they want to do, may suffer setback, may, and it may say true in the Senate. That is the scenario. That is the beauty of bicameral legislature. If one item fails in one chamber and it's skipped through in the other chamber, then they have to come to harmonize their views.
Yeah, so that is the point. If there is going to be a harmonization of the oppositions at the end of the day.
Yes.
Why do it divergently in the first place?
Well, I think what happened during the sixth assembly, as I said, maybe one of these, and there may be management of finance, I don't know. You know, every time they want to do that type of exercise out of their vote, whether it's one fifty billion or one thirty five or one twenty five, a billion dollar will be set aside for that exercise. And then to be shared, appears five hundred million. So maybe control finance is part of the reason, I wouldn't know.
All right. Mr. Ito, what manner of public hearing are you expecting? Given this background that I have just provided, that the Senate and the House of Representatives are working on the same constitution and they are holding public hearings separately. And at the end of the day, they're going to come back and come and harmonize. Does that not look like a waste of time, a waste of public resources? And a waste of people's precious time for this exercise? Mr. Ito, can you hear us? We appear to be having some difficulties with this connection there. As soon as we are able to resolve that, we should get Ito back on. But at this point in time, let's take a short break. When we return, we'll be looking at all the other issues. Welcome back and thank you for staying with us. Let's get back to Mr. Samson Ito now, who is with us from Oxford in the United Kingdom. Samson, I was asking before we went on that break, why the two houses of the National Assembly are taking two different routes in addressing one issue? They are good, as it appears now, the Senate is holding its own public hearing, the House of Reps will eventually hold its own public hearing. Does that not look like a waste of precious public resources and a waste of time of those who have submitted memorandum, who may want to attend the public hearings of the two houses?
Well, Imoni, the only justification that I see for this bifocated approach adopted by the National Assembly is, you know, the fact that when you've got two parallel processes, issues that are not captured under one process may be captured in another process. For me, that's the only argument that I see in support of this. But if you do the cost benefit of analyses of both of them, I think the opportunity cost of having, adopting a harmonized approach is lesser than having this bifocated approach that the National Assembly has adopted. Because as you see, we are actually in an era of disruption. Covid nineteen, you know, has disrupted value chains across the world and it's changed the way we're doing business and even governance. So you would expect that the National Assembly would have, you know, prioritized, for me, you know, how to rethink and reimagine how to conduct its own businesses. And, you know, I would have expected honestly that the committees will work in harmony and conduct, you know, public hearings. So if you have both chambers, maybe rather than have twelve centers, they could have more centers and deploy, you know, members to go consult with the people. But be that as it may, we have these two processes and we hope that they would harmonize. They actually have to harmonize before bills are transmitted to the state houses of assembly. But I just want to reiterate, you know, the fact that, you know, this particular amendment process is very crucial and very important for us as Nigerians. And the public hearing, despite maybe the methodological challenges and deficiencies that the National Assembly has adopted, the process has, we should encourage Nigerians to utilize this mechanism to make their voices heard and participate in the public hearings. You know, it starts at nine AM to about five PM in those twelve centers. Let citizens go there and make their voices heard, but don't stop at the public hearings. Keep engaging legislators so that whatever report that they present should be a reflection of the will and aspiration of the people. But my greatest worry, Imoni, is whilst I've got some confidence that the National Assembly may pass legislations that, you know, would advance the course of the Nigerian state and as well as its people, I am very worried about the role that the governors and the State Houses of Assemblies play. Because even where the National Assembly passes progressive legislations like devolution of powers, local government autonomy, independent candidacy, when it goes to the states, the governors influence the State Houses of Assemblies and they reject some of those amendments at the expense of public interest. And so the governors and the State House of Assemblies and the National Assembly, including the president, must be driven by public interest. In the light of the prevailing challenges that we have, the fractured Nigerian state that we are grappling with, the insecurity, the leadership crisis, the poor, you know, economic issues that we're grappling with, that the public interest, the public interest will be the guiding principle. And anything short of that would render this process not just a nullity, but a waste of public resources. And let's not forget that this amendment process is being conducted with taxpayers' money. We're spending hundreds of millions. Development partners are also contributing to this. And if the outcome is not reflective of the will of the people, then we would have wasted, you know, taxpayers' money at such a time when nations are on their knees because of the Covid nineteen and they are struggling to build back better.
Now, that of course takes me to my next question. The fact that we acknowledge, many Nigerians do acknowledge that the Nigeria of today is much more fractured than the Nigeria of twenty years ago or twenty two years ago, when we came back to this path on democratic process and all of that. Now, do you think that at the end of this exercise, that these fractures can be mended? These divisions, these big yawning divisions can be closed and that Nigeria can begin to come back on the march again? Is it possible that this constitutional amendment process will heal the wounds that are gaping at the moment?
I think it is very, very possible. If you have a political class and the problem of the Nigerian state isn't the Nigerian people, it's about a political class. If our political leaders, you know, want to foster national unity, they've got the power and the backing of the state because they are the constituted political authority and they are vested with the powers to drive this process. If they are committed, it is possible. And what do we want to see? That this consultation and inclusion of every Nigerian, irrespective of geographical or religious extraction, that we ensure inclusion and all the voices are heard. Now, we don't have legislators from a cross section of, or one section of the country shutting down legislators from other parts of the country when they raise critical issues that border on livelihoods that are central to the security and welfare of their people. We must be ready to listen to all sides because they matter, because they are part of the Nigerian state. And we have to define who the national we, because we're grappling, you know, with nationalism. And when you have political leaders who should idealize and symbolize national unity, become that agents of destabilization and division in society. It becomes very difficult to have laws and policies that foster national unity, where you have public officials justifying. Because I listened to the Minister of Justice the other day on one of your sister program and he was just justifying, you know, trying to draw false equivalence just to justify what I call grotesque ethnic nationalism. And that's unacceptable. The rhetoric that comes from our political leaders needs to change. We need to be very inclusive. We need to recognize that we are diverse. We've got, you know, several tribes and they need to be on the table. We've got to decentralize. And that's why I talked about group autonomy, you know? That you need to decentralize. You need to recognize the fact that you've got micro-nationalities. And these micro-nationalities need to be in the room. There are discussions around changing our electoral system from fixed past the post to proportional representation. You've got situations where women and persons with disability have been excluded from the governance process because you have a constitution that is so hostile to inclusion. You've got issues relating to citizenship. Why is it that Samson Ito, who is born in Bauchi today, who was born in Bauchi and has lived all his life in Bauchi, cannot lay claim, you know, to any rights in Bauchi state? I have to go back, you know, to my state, Kogi state, if I'm going to run for office. Why is it, why is that the case? You know, so these are, these are issues, but at the heart of these and across nations where they address the national question, is the fact that you recognize that we are diverse. You need to listen to all the voices. You need to give people group autonomy to decide on how they want to govern themselves. But more importantly, you've got to decentralize. And the federal government has a lot of burden that it can't carry. So let it share some of those burdens, give that to the, give some to the states, give some, you know, to the local governments. So we can have that Nigeria and that nation where everyone counts and everyone matters and voices are heard. As long as we continually exclude people, you know, from the decision-making table, the cost of exclusion is very, very high. And Imoni, I cannot conclude, you know, by really condemning, you know, this attacks that we're seeing on government institutions, like institutions like INEC. You see every day in some parts of the country, particularly in the eastern part of the country, the INEC offices are being bought, are being vandalized. That is unacceptable. We need to rise to condemn this, that these institutions need to be protected. They are our institutions. And if these institutions don't exist, it becomes very difficult to govern a society. And this has grave implications, you know, for both security and for our democracy at large. But I hope that the powers that be, the security agencies and even the president, you know, prioritizes this issue about security. Because it's a big, it's a big challenge where citizens cannot wake up or cannot sleep and wake up with two eyes closed, believing that they've got a political leadership that is guaranteeing their security.
I can tell you, Samson, that that's a very worrisome development because, again, only last night, another INEC facility, this time in Okka in Annabrasdi, was attacked by truckloads of, we refer to them now in Nigeria as unknown gunmen. And they raised down police stations, attacked INEC facilities and all of that. And don't forget that the Annabra Governorship election is just around the corner in November. And we keep having these incidents, common like this. That election will be threatening and the twenty twenty three election itself will be in jeopardy and all of that. But we just hope that, like you said, government is taking very proactive steps to ensure that this does not continue to happen. But Mr. Odewale, let's come back to the issue that he raised now. And that is the issue of the fractured Nigerian state. And the fact that there are people who today think that this process, this public hearing, this constitutional review process may not go as far enough as they want and therefore may not heal the very deep wounds that we have created in this country. And that, and of course, there are sections and persons in society who are resisting any form of change because the current constitution seems to suit them just well, benefits them, and they are enjoying it as it were.
Thank you very much. Yes, we have a fractured Nigerian state today arising from a self-inflicted systemic dysfunction inflicted on ourselves. And what is systemic dysfunction we are talking about? Nigeria is a federation on paper, but more or less a unitary state in practice. So my hope is that the National Assembly, the person crop of federal lawmakers and state lawmakers, we see the opportunity and do the needful by coming up with far reaching constitutional review that will make Nigeria to be a federal state. If that is done, those who are thinking that the exercise is about to start will not in any way persuade them or give them what they want, may be surprised. Because there is no other way of going about the problem at hand than to sit down. And then what is the problem with Nigeria now? Is that we are running a unitary constitution to run a federal state. And as Mr. Samson Ito said, our diversity, in fact, diversity is the one that used to give back to federation. All federations of the world, if you look into them, diversity is number one thing. That means the country is diversified. Secondly, you talk of landmarks and what have you. So and to manage diversity, the best form of government is federalism, which was recruited to us by the British colonialists in the fifties and up to nineteen sixty. But systematically, we got the system distorted. But we thank God that window of opportunity has come for us to start addressing those areas of anomalies now. I just hope that this crop of federal and state lawmakers will do justice to the opportunity they have. So that that hope can be renewed, the hope of Nigerian citizens, that Nigeria can work again, that hope can be renewed. Because all those people going about destroying federal infrastructure here and there, there is no message they are passing to Nigerians and government that they have lost interest in the entity called Nigeria. Simple, that is it. So if you want to win back their hope, their trust, their confidence, their sense of belonging back, let us run the country the way it. but let us run the country the way it was recruited to us. The center, Mr. Samson said this over body, to me, the center has even suffocated itself. The center has suffocated itself by allocating all manner of functions, resources and everything that it cannot manage. And that is what is leading to all the problems we have attained. You talk of insecurity, you talk of corruption, you talk of unemployment and so on and so forth. So if that is addressed, even fiscal federalism, look at the revenue allocation formula. The center cities today takes 52.6%. While the state takes 36.82%. And the 774 local government, 20.7%. So in that type of sharing formula, that is a productivity-killing, national cake, federalism. You can't have a potent federation with that type of approach. That is a top-to-bottom approach. It had to be bottom-to-top approach of development. That was where we started from. So if number two, further structure in governance and devolution of power, and then fiscal federalism and by extension, local government autonomy, if this time around, we are able to achieve that, I think the absence of belonging for those people that are.
In 2014, there was the National Conference.
Yes.
And a number of these issues that are now being talked about here at this constitution review were debated robustly at that conference, conclusions reached, recommendations submitted in that document of over 3,000, I mean 10,000 pages and all of that. Now, why don't we simply go back to some of those recommendations? Why are we wasting time in this process? Can't the National Assembly simply call up that document and work with it?
Yes, you are right. The National Assembly, whether through private member B, can work on that document or through executive B. If the president is interested in that resolution of 2014 COMFAB, the president can forward it to the National Assembly through an executive B. Instead of this, instead of this different approach, they are going up and they want. But the deputy general president, Omagigi, I think in one of the interactions he had with people, he said the 2014, the 2014, the report of the 2014 National COMFAB is one of the documents that they are looking into in the exercise about to start.
So we just hope that this time around, it will be a much more serious exercise, a more meaningful one.
It must be, it must be.
And it will not be another jamboree.
If it is another jamboree, if they make it to be another jamboree, I'm afraid to.
All right.
More than that.
Mr. Taye Odewale is the National Coordinator, Coalition of Federalists for Good Governance, joining us here in the studio. And we were joined by Mr. Samson Itodo, who is the Executive Director, Yaga Africa. He joined us from Oxford in the United Kingdom. Thank you so much, Samson, for your time and we wish you the very best out there.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
And to our viewers, we want to thank you immensely for investing your time with us on the program today. Please join us again when we bring you a fresh edition of People, Polities and Power. You can be reassured that we'll be following up on the public hearings, on the review of the 1999 Nigerian constitution. And our next edition, of course, we should be focusing more on that. Bye for now.